Two devices we have.
There we go. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our joint study session with our great Parks and Recreation Commission. This city council special meeting is being held telephonically and virtually in compliance with state executive and legislative actions. Responding to the COVID nineteen emergency. So call this study session to order. I'll just have everybody introduce themselves and I'll start on my screen. I'll start with Laura.
Good evening. I am Laura Morrissey, Parks and Recreation Chair.
Welcome, Laura. Jenny.
Hello, my name is Jenny Baker and I am one of the Parks and Rec Commissioners. Is that what you would call me?
Yep. Welcome.
Thank you.
Amy.
Hi, I'm Amy Arnold and I'm one of the Parks and Rec Commissioners as well.
Welcome, Tom.
Hi, I'm Tom Russell, Parks and Rec Commissioner and Vice Chair.
Welcome, Robert.
Hi, I'm Robert Poole, Parks and Rec Commissioner, joined this year.
Welcome. Did I get all the Parks Commissioners?
Jeff Powell has just joined us. He's our newest Commissioner.
There is.
Yeah.
Jeff, we're just doing introductions. If you'd like to introduce yourself. You were on mute.
Hi, I'm Jeff Powell. I've been in Covington almost twelve years. And Parks Commission for a couple of months.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Jennifer Hardjoulsen.
Hi, I'm Councilmember Hardjoulsen. As Mary just stated, it's great to meet with you all again.
Christina.
Hello, Councilmember Soldis here. Happy to see everyone. Can't wait to hear what we have.
Yeah.
And Councilmember Porter. Good to see everybody. Now we have a whole crew. Awesome.
Joe.
Joseph Momo on the council. It's great to see everybody tonight.
Jared.
Jared Coppel, Councilmember.
Sean.
Sean Smith, Council Mayor Pro Tem.
Ethan.
Hi, everybody. Ethan Newton, Parks and Recreation Director for the city.
Regan.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Regan Bowley, Covington City Manager.
Krista.
Krista Bates, Executive Assistant Deputy Speaker.
And I'm Jeff Wagner. I am your Mayor of Covington. Did I miss anybody? Doesn't look like it. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Laura. I believe is running the show tonight. Welcome.
Thank you. Well, thanks, Council, for being here with us. This is kind of our hour for you guys to take a deep dive into all things parks and kind of our time as your citizen representatives to share with you what's on our minds. What we've been thinking about and some things that have been happening in the Parks Commission. So we kind of have a little outline to go through, but I just want to emphasize that I want this to be as casual as necessary. So feel free to jump in with any questions or comments or ideas, or if there's things that you would like to hear about that we haven't addressed. And I'm willing to just let this go where the conversation leads tonight. So we did a quick introduction of names with our Parks Commissioners, but I just wanted them to share a tiny bit about themselves so you could get to know them a little bit better. I know most of the Commissioners, this is the only time beyond interviews that you really ever see them. And so they just have like a super quick introduction. So I'm just going to jump through that really quick and I'm going through my screen. So Jenny, can I have you introduce yourself, maybe say how long you've lived in Covington, and then you know what you use in the Covington Park System?
Yes. So again, my name is Jenny Baker. I moved to Covington in about two thousand and nine. My family and I enjoy exploring the outdoors now with my nine-year-old son. And we do frequent the local trails, the parks, and we enjoy kayaking and boating on our local waters as often as time allows, as well as any kids' sports. I do have two adult children that grew up in Covington, both which attended Covington Elementary, Mattson Middle School, and both graduated from Kentwood High School. And during their time here, we also frequented the local parks and such. So we're very active in the athletic programs here in Covington and we enjoy our outdoors.
Great. I'm going to move it on to Tom. Thanks, Jenny.
Hi, so I moved out here in sixty-four with my parents and my two older brothers at the time. And graduated Kentridge. Moved on and then in ninety-four, moved back to the Covington area with my family. And I've lived here ever since. Been kind of involved in Covington for a while. Relay for Life, one of the founding members when that started off with Margaret Hortho. And then I've been in the Covington Lions from like two thousand and ten through two thousand and nineteen when they disbanded. So yeah, I've been. I've watched the city found and all the Dickens Creek Park, which has been really the legacy park in the area and then the community park developed. So it's been real enjoyable seeing it come together.
Great. Thank you, Tom. Robert.
Hi, I'm Robert Poole. My family and I moved to the area when I was a kid back in nineteen eighty-nine. We lived off Wax Road area between Crestwood and Tohoma. We moved away for a time and decided that it was time to come back to Covington recently. And as a kid, I attended Crestwood, Mattson and Kentwood, and then later Green River. My kids will attend Crestwood, Mattson and Kentwood following down the pathway and my sister lives in the area with her family as well. And then we just talked to my brother into buying a house just down the street. So we're hoping we can drag him back to Covington as well. So the whole Poole family will be within driving distance. Thanks.
Thank you, Robert. Amy.
I'm Amy Arnold. We have lived here since two thousand and six. We have four kiddos. And we are frequent users of the pool and CCP and any of the youth athletic programs. I think we've done everything but flag football. So we're frequent users.
Great. And Jeff.
Hello. I said I've lived in Covington about twelve years. I had my granddaughter in Covington Elementary School. I coached youth soccer through our programs for two or three seasons. And we use parks and we also end up going to Maple Valley a lot to use the dog park out there. And that's about it.
Great. Thank you, Jeff. You guys are probably sick of hearing from me, but Laura Morrissey, you know, most of you know, I've got four kiddos. We've been in Covington twelve years. My youngest two were basically born and have grown up here. My youngest is now eleven and my oldest is now sixteen. They were like little toddlers when we came here. And we have done it all kind of like Amy. I don't think there's much in Covington that we haven't done in terms of park recreation, youth sports, and then myself being a runner, I'm always out and about on the sidewalks, on the trails, in the parks, moving around, getting exercise. So anyway, so there's our introductions. That's our commission minus Steve Pant, whose son had the audacity to get married. So anyway, we kind of want to roll into some of the things we wanted to talk about, just thinking about some of the things that have been going on in parks this year, I'm sure. Like many other things in the city, kind of the big elephant in the room sort of umbrella over everything has been COVID. And COVID has, I mean, it's no exaggeration to say really changed the way things are done right now. And so what we have noticed in this COVID season that seems to keep on going is how important parks and recreation have been to the community and to the families that we know. For some families, it's kind of, it's been an essential lifeline to let their kids get energy out, to give their families something to do, to help keep them sane. Ethan has some updates for you. If you wanted some updates on like program status and things like that, but we don't have to get into that tonight. But it's there and it's available for you if you want him to share that. But Amy was just going to share a little bit more of her thoughts on kind of COVID and parks and the impacts there.
Um, Parks and Rec, I think especially during this pandemic have been just so important because especially for my kids, they have been, it's been able to provide a sense of normalcy. The fact of when we are stuck in our homes, but yet we can escape and go to the playground and play, or we can do swim lessons even with the modified and all the safety requirements. It is in playing soccer and doing the things that they were used to and getting back to that has just, from a mental health perspective for our family has just been so huge. So I can't say enough how big Parks and Rec have been for our family during this pandemic.
I know that Jenny was going to add some things, just kind of about the mental health aspect of parks.
So I'm for, I just feel that city parks and open spaces in general improve our physical and psychological health. I feel that they strengthen our communities and make our city and neighborhoods like just a more attractive place to live. And I just feel that more time spent in parks and green spaces can help us all kind of fight our own mental health issues. A lot of people struggle with depression and anxiety and stress right now, especially during COVID. So being out there in our green spaces and fresh air is very important.
And I would just like to compliment the council that during COVID, you guys did not make kind of a flat umbrella decision to just close all parks. There were cities that did that and left people without access to any parks at all. And I know that CCP was closed for a while. But I really appreciate just as a citizen that lives here, that you took a more nuanced approach on a park-by-park basis. And CCP ended up being the only one that was closed. And so that just gave the chance for me to get my kids out of the house and into a place with some space, some green, some places to run. And so I really appreciate the nuanced approach that you guys took rather than just making a flat decision to close everything all at once. With the essential role of Parks and Rec in COVID, there's some things as the commission that have kind of popped out to us that we support, that we want to communicate to you. One is just the continuity of parks maintenance. And I know you guys know that's kind of a consistent effort, a little bit of an uphill effort. And especially during COVID, when things started growing and there was nobody there to cut them back. Maintenance has really done a very good job of reclaiming a lot of what the weeds and the blackberries have taken. But as our parks can system continues to grow, we know that maintenance is often a difficult sticky point, just because of resources available. And as the commission, we support the continuity of maintenance as much as we're able to provide. And then also, we, you may know that we have the PROS Plan going on that is going to be updated and will be coming before you at the beginning of next year. And just as the commission, we support that process too. And the, that is essential and consider part of an essential role just because of the necessity of the PROS Plan for funding, grants, all of those types of things. Um, and then with the PROS Plan, one thing that has risen to the top of the last PROS Plan that we did, the ones that that's expiring in twenty twenty-two. And it has risen to the top of this PROS Plan too. At our last commission meeting, we heard from the consultant and he showed us some of the data that they have collected from service. And that is trails and walkability. It seems to consistently be a theme that people in the city would like to see more of. And so I know Jenny wanted to say just a couple of words about that and share her thoughts about that idea.
Most recently for me, the pandemic has shown that we don't have enough access necessarily to nature. I found it difficult to park, to access trails and parks, especially the Seuss Creek Trail. So continuing the sidewalk from two fifty-six, one fifty-six intersection near Covington Elementary, there's not much parking down there by Seuss Creek Trail off of two fifty-sixth. And it seems to be getting busier down there. So that would personally be a benefit for my family and I'm assuming many others as well.
So before I go any further, I just want to give a chance for the council to share any thoughts, ask any questions, give any feedback. Anything that you want to pipe up and share before I just keep on talking? And I'm happy to keep on talking, but I do want you guys to get your chance to share thoughts as well.
Council have any questions?
Yeah. So I appreciate the, the update and the conversation about parks and keeping them open during COVID and going forward with, sorry, my family decided now they're, they're heading out. So the, I lost my train of thought. With walkability and access and parking, you know, one of the things in Alasta Parks Commission to start thinking about is, is safety on our trails as well. Been seeing a little bit about car clouding and breaking into parked cars and that sort of thing. And however we can, you know, help raise the, the idea or the, or the awareness that it's, it's not a good place to break into cars in Covington or whatever. I mean, we just, it seems like it's too easy and, and far too many people are seeing their cars broken into. So anyway, that's just something I was thinking about related to walkability in our trails. So.
Does any Commissioners want to jump in with that idea and share any thoughts before I keep talking or talk about it?
Okay, I can touch on that. I think the city's done a great job supporting, obviously with funding to go out and secure some more property around our parks is key. And well-lit areas and it's even the, the Southern Park, we had a challenge with parking there. And when you did park, you're on the side of a street. So the potential to have open space with more visibility is going to be better in that area on the Southern Park. So you're absolutely right, Sean. It's, it's a challenge to, to park on the street. And if we had some more visible signage on, on directionals on where the trails were, a trail system was, I think there's a lot more opportunity to walk an extra half mile to that trail than it is to put the, the car in one of ten spots to be broken into. Because there's not as many people going by when there's less parking as well.
I can just add that, you know, as a runner in the running and active trail using community, this is unfortunately a problem that's not limited to Covington. It's generally people who use trails tend to think it's not necessarily a matter of if their car gets broken into, but a matter of when. And you know, I'm sure you're aware that it's very much a regional issue. In a way, I think you can actually use that as a reason to advocate for sidewalks, because if people have the ability to walk safely to a trail, then they don't need to take a car. That's not a solution for everybody, but it might be a solution for some. So and then it also does play into the connectivity that people seem to want and the walkability that is really valued within the city and the community. Okay. Any other thoughts from anybody before I go on? Okay, super. All right. So we're just going to shift a little bit specifically to aquatics, athletics, recreation events. So kind of away from the physical park properties to more of the activities that happen in Covington. And Rob wanted to share some thoughts with you about these programs.
Yeah, absolutely. The events of, you know, the last year have been a little bit tough, but I appreciate the adaptability that the cities had and the parks departments have had. The events that we've been able to have, the special events, whether they're the summer concert series where we could safely gather the entertainers. I think those events are not just really important for our families to be able to gather and, and get out and the neighbors to gather. But additionally, it provides opportunities to members of the community to come out and, and participate, right? And, and not just to show up to the event, but also the local musicians that get hired. The local restaurants that cater the events. It really draws everybody in as one larger community. I look forward to virtually watching the, the Christmas tree lighting this year. And I wanted to say a thank you to the council that does come out. Sean, you're very, you're very out there in the community and Jeff, you're out there as well. And when you're out there, whether it's a soccer game on a Saturday or it's, it's one of the, the stargazing events or previously the, the cider fest and whatnot, that'll come back eventually. The attendance is up, right? So your participation is key. And for the council that have joined in the recent years and joined just before COVID or after it, it's great to see you come out and join as well. I recognize several faces from our National Night Out, which was great to see everybody and we look forward to seeing you out and about again. So events are important. Obviously you know that and you did a great job not shutting everything down. And we look forward to seeing what events we can put together in the next year and what recreation programs we can continue to grow as the city expands.
And part of that is also the Aquatic Center and the feasibility study. We've talked a lot about that at our council meetings. As a, sorry, not council, commission meeting. As a commission, we are super excited for this potential. As members of the community, I think we all feel it is very, very needed. And so just, you know, I don't think that we need to convince you that this would be an awesome thing to have. I know it's going to be a pretty heavy lift in terms of cooperation and in terms of finance. But we just want to say that we fully support it. We like what the consultant has been able to put together. And we hope as you get the final study in your hands, that you guys are able to act on it and possibly move it forward, hopefully move it forward in ways and it doesn't. I don't know. I don't want to say just like get put on a shelf because I don't think that you guys would do that. But I know that sometimes things get lost in the shuffle of everything else that's going on. You guys have a lot on your plate. So I just wanted to share that we are aware of it and we're excited about it. And we are looking forward to supporting you as a council and whatever needs to happen to help move that aquatic recreation center forward. Um, okay, let's see. Any other Commissioners want to share anything related to athletics or aquatics or anything like that? Before we go on any further. I will just add to that. I think the Aquatic Center has done an excellent job with their safety procedures and things so far related to COVID. As far as I know, there has not been a single COVID transmission incident that's traceable to the Aquatic Center. I'm not privy to all the information, but as far as I know, like nothing has happened. And that really speaks to what a great job that they are doing. And their commitment to keep that facility open and available to the public during this time is fantastic. And like Amy said, our kids need that. They need the normalcy. They need the ability to get their energy out. So as a commission, we're thankful to them and supportive of them for all that they're doing in that way. Okay, we're gonna switch gears again to parks. But before I did that, I just wanted to pause again and let council have the opportunity to ask any questions or make any comments or anything like that. Oh, okay. I don't know how to do the raise hand thing. Okay.
Yeah, the, the only thing I appreciate the continued support for the events. Yeah, I really think they are helping to develop Covington's identity. People are starting to look forward to those. And I know it was disappointing that we had to cancel the, the parade. But hopefully we'll be able to, to get that relaunched again. This next year, that might be something to start thinking about is how we want to theme that or, or what are the things we need to do if that's going to be possible for us to, to hold. And then another one to just put on your kind of longer term to-do list is, is some type of event around the Fourth of, Fourth of July. Considering our prohibition on fireworks has now gone into effect and I know people are going to start. If the fire departments to be believed, you'll see the use in illegal fireworks go down. That's what happens after a ban is you'll see a spike. And then over time, it just slowly dissipates. And people have asked us, well, if we, we don't have private fireworks, what's going to be the alternative? So just something to start putting on your to-do list to start thinking about potential events around the Fourth of July or, or Independence Day. So thank you.
Yeah. Somewhat related to that, and Ethan, I don't even know if you remember this, but before the pandemic, I had started talking about the idea of a kids' run series. We have the Summer's End Fun Run that the Multicare Foundation puts on. And my kids did that in twenty nineteen, had an absolutely fantastic time and were begging me to find more. And looking around, there weren't more. The shortest runs out there were five Ks designed for adults. There were not little two or three K runs designed for kids. So I had started thinking about possibly putting together like a summer kids' run series through, that could go through possibly Covington Days and maybe even the Fourth of July, whatever event we parks comes up with, could incorporate something like that. And you could have a series of three to four kids' runs that would end with the Summer's End Fun Run. So hopefully Ethan's not like, oh my gosh, why did she say that? But that was something. And then COVID came and of course, you know, that's how that goes. So.
Just to add to that, I think we actually were planning on doing a, like a fun run or kids' run, the same route of the Covington Days Parade. Before that changed, just because we already have those streets cut up or closed off and whatnot. So those are, those are certainly, I think the distance is much more manageable to put a couple of those together opposed to longer events which require more space. So good ideas.
Yeah. Okay. Um, all right. So we're gonna bounce again to parks, specific parks in general. And this is kind of always my favorite because I just absolutely love our parks. And so Tom was gonna, he mentioned Jenkins Creek already, and he was gonna talk a little bit more about Jenkins Creek and what that park means to him.
Yeah, because I've lived in this area so long, really Jenkins Creek was the park in Covington for a long time. And it's, it's been, it's Achilles Hill is the the location and the facilities that aren't there. And when the community park was built and designed, it really took a lot of limelight away from Jenkins Creek. But now that that is at a, a point where it's being utilized, the community park is being utilized. Everybody's having a great time with the soccer fields and the amphitheater there. And now that the the missing little piece at Jenkins Creek park has been resolved and it's, we're starting to move forward with facilities there and design. This park is going to blossom into its own, I believe. And I, I go there and use it mainly for the, the trails and walking around the loop with my gal. We walk the loop, we, the elevation changes. So that's really important because over at the community park, that it's a very nice trail system, but it's very level and you don't have a lot of elevation change. So that's one reason why I really like the Jenkins Creek Trail. Once that development happens there, it's going to relieve some of the pressure from the community park. Especially if they have some kid-friendly structures there. So it's gonna, it's gonna be good to help with the distribution of usage. It's also going to be, it's a critical piece for the development of trails along the Jenkins Creek. And one of the things that I've noticed was it would be really one of the things that I've noticed was it would be really important is signage from one park to another, just pointing out where how you could walk from one park to the other. CCP Park is two and a half miles from Jenkins Creek Park. Most of it's as a matter of fact, all of it has sidewalks. So that should be an urban trail marked out. You could use signage with QR codes. That would just show the directions from one park to the other. So and most of the links are already there at the the Parks and Rec website. So I'm not sure if anyone's familiar with QR codes, but there's actually a really nice sign there at Jenkins Creek describing all the watershed drainage system, but really not too much about how to walk and get exercise from one park to the other. So I think it's something that we should look into, explore a little more, especially urban, urban walking paths.
Thank you, Tom. With Jenkins Creek, you may or you may not know that we have, the city has now acquired the property that what's commonly referred to as the Allstate Building is sitting on kind of that back part of the roundabout. And then that property goes even back beyond Jenkins Creek itself. It actually adds a pretty decent sized corner to that park. What, that's what Tom was referring to by saying kind of that missing piece. So we plan Parks Department has kind of planned to use that for parking and a very visible entrance to Jenkins Creek Park as well as bathrooms in the future, because that is one thing that Jenkins Creek Park does not have. And when we were listening to Jesse at our Parks Commission meeting, he told us that maintenance wise, cleaning up graffiti from Jenkins Creek is a real pain for the maintenance team because there is no water access at Jenkins Creek Park. So that will, you know, having bathrooms, being able to tie into water and sewer whenever we can build out that parking lot welcome area will help out not only with the visibility of the park and the access to the park, but also the maintenance of the park. And then I, you may remember that we do have a master plan for Jenkins Creek that was completed two years ago, maybe two and a half, three. So we know what we want to do with that park and that master plan got a lot of community support. I'm excited to see that built out hopefully sooner rather than later. But I know, you know, money, it's always kind of comes down to that a lot of times. But I also go through that park on a weekly, bi-weekly, if not sometimes daily basis. And the thing that I would wish for the most in that park is just for a feeling of greater safety. That the park has a lot of areas without great sightlines. And so as you're moving, I've never really felt unsafe in the park, but I'm always very, very aware of what's around me when I'm in the park, just because the sightlines are not great. The park is very divided with the upper and lower part. And then all of the trees in the middle, you can't see from one, the upper part to the lower part or vice versa. The master plan has taken that into account and attempts to solve that problem. One other thing I really like about the master plan is its inclusion of play areas for kids. Since having my own kids, that's always been something that I'm champion, championing is more playgrounds, more playgrounds, more playgrounds. And personally, with the addition of the Allstate property to the Jenkins Creek Park, I think that gives us more space for a bigger playground than what's in the master plan. That's just my personal opinion. But so there's a lot of potential with Jenkins Creek and it comes up frequently in the commission, like Tom said, it's a park that is kind of the legacy park of Covington. I remember Margaret Harder used to call it the Central Park of Covington. And so we would love to see something happen with that park, just to make it more usable to the community. Safer for the community, more accessible, all of that stuff. Any commissioners want to add or counsel anything you want to like say or comment on with Jenkins Creek? Yeah, Christina.
Thank you. I just want to reaffirm the magic potion. It's like the pixie dust of kids. Put something there for kids and guess what happens to, you know, to population, to parents. They can drag us on the worst of days, you know, and to the best of days, obviously. But it's, and obviously, safety is so, so important. So with that in consideration, but I really like that you pointed out the distribution, right, of whether it's parents or just, just population. CCP can get pretty crowded. You know, we do, we do sports. Like Amy said, you know, sports are so important. Everything that Covington puts out that's outside is mostly kids for our kids. And that's what's gotten many parents through, you know, 2020 and 2021. So I just really want to thank you for thinking of that. And just reaffirm how important it is. I love your idea of bigger playground. Done. I'll be there. I'll be there. And if I'm not there, my son will drive me there. Yeah. So just really, really important. Thank you for thinking of that.
Thank you. And I just wanted, before I get to Jennifer, just remind you that the master plan for Jenkins Creek calls for two playgrounds. So there's kind of one, like a more traditional one down lower, which we could maybe possibly make bigger, maybe. But then the upper level has kind of a natural type playground with like logs and rocks and things like that arranged in such a way to be conducive to kids and playing. So it's just a very different type of playground, but still a playground, like nonetheless. Fake logs and fake rocks, of course, all of that stuff. So.
And the grandparents love it too. I'm just saying.
Right. And the playground is like within a walking, so that walking path that Tom referenced, that's a loop now. The master plan has it reconfigured into a figure eight. So the parents can walk along that figure eight and the kids can play and the sightlines will still be there. So people can exercise while their kids play, but still like see them and feel like they have access and control over their children.
Brilliant.
Yeah. Okay, Jennifer.
So I just wanted to add a couple of things that I find unique about Jenkins Creek. One is the water feature. You have ducks. I know. The kids love to see the ducks and walk over the bridges. And my kid's school has quite a few times done a salmon release program there where we go and pick up the eggs from the hatchery, raise them at the school and then the release them there in Jenkins Creek. So I think there's still opportunity. More opportunities for things like that and partnering as, as the park grows into its better self. Also, something I don't see with our other parks that really I think sets Jenkins Creek apart is its access to some of our local businesses. And I wonder if the commission has thought of any ways to connect the businesses to the park and vice versa, especially with the parking coming in. And that even brings more access to now on the other side of the park with Multicare. I mean, when every, I would say almost every time I go to Jenkins Creek, I walk over to Starbucks. You know, and so I'm thinking, and there's lots of restaurants there. There's a lot of opportunity. There's also, you know, for employees taking breaks or picnics at Home Depot. I just feel like there's a lot of opportunities to connect the community to the businesses and to our park spaces. And I wonder if you guys have had any thoughts about that, since that park does offer a unique location in that regard.
Yeah, we haven't talked about that a ton. We have talked about it in terms of Multicare. So Multicare's outreach coordinator and her name is of course escaping me right now, Colleen McEwen. Colleen McEwen and I have met together a couple of times and talked about ways that possibly Multicare and the city, you know, could partner very, I mean unofficially, like because I'm not city staff. So just kind of brainstorming and but, and I think at one point, maybe Ethan, you should jump in here before I go down a rabbit trail. That's totally incorrect.
That's okay. Well, one, I can provide a bit of an update for everybody because Matthew and I just met on Monday, so like, what, yesterday, with Multicare, a number of their staff. As we've talked to them about a trail network that would expand between Jenkins Creek Park and 516, which will have a pedestrian underpass at some point. And they're very much excited about that and how that may kind of kind of connect the Multicare campus to a park and kind of other parts of the city as well. So we are talking to them. They're also very interested in creating a park of some sort with those Gary Oak stands that's right next to their campus. Right now, they're calling it Pulse Park. And so, you know, there's some opportunities to do some private-public partnerships for something like that. And there was a, we did actually apply for a grant project, a trail project grant funding for all these trails between Multicare and Home Depot and Jenkins Creek Park and 516. Which would have been a great project to connect to those businesses up at Home Depot. Unfortunately, that was one grant that we didn't get yet. So it's kind of, the vision is there, I think, to kind of connect to that area as well. It's just, it's just not funded yet.
I mean, you can access it. You just go right next to the storage place and it helps you. And then the storage place has done an amazing job of making that a very accessible, actually very aesthetically pleasing path between the school and the storage space. It's actually really impressive, honestly. So it's, it's not that, it really is just hopping across the gravel to get to it.
There is, there is the sidewalk kind of area that you can certainly access that area. The city also owns a strip of land right next to, between Home Depot and the creek that actually is up at the elevation. It kind of runs behind Red Robin and Home Depot. It almost looks like a very wide planting strip right now, if you go into that area. But that is an area the city owns most of and could develop a trail at some point. So there's, there's opportunities to do things.
Awesome. Thank you.
Elizabeth.
Thanks, Laura. Yeah, so two things about the Jenkins. You know, to, to Jennifer's point about that asphalt path that's there, I assumed it probably was there to connect the the elementary school to offer kids access to get back to their neighborhoods. But I mean, it might be a really nice idea to have a sign there that says Jenkins Creek Park. You know, that way so that people, if they are shopping at businesses and aren't aware and go, oh, there's a park back there and I can walk to it. I mean, that might be something to think about. And then the other creative idea that, you know, I think about when it comes to Multicare, being right next to Jenkins Creek and that field. I think it would be cool to have like a a health park where maybe there's a garden with vegetables so they can tie it into walking, exercise, you know, eating properly. And obviously, that would be probably more of a private partnership, either with Multicare and or with some other organization that might be having like honeybees back there or something that kind of, you know, reiterates the importance of connecting in a healthy way with, with the environment, not just exercise, which is important, but internally too. So.
Well, I love this because I think that all of us, Covington, Parks Commission, Multicare, are thinking along the same lines. Because when I met with Colleen, which was at this point is probably about a year ago now, she was talking about Pulse Park. She, they were thinking of it being sort of like a sort of exercise loop. But I believe she was also kind of brainstorming the same types of things that you were about, like healthy living and possibly a garden. And it was all like theoretical. And I don't know, you know, what has progressed in that. COVID, of course, everything's like all wonky. But so, but I think that we are all, three of us, council, parks and Multicare, thinking in the same direction, which is fantastic. I want to just kind of circle back really quick to what Jennifer said about the lake and make you aware of just kind of what a little treasure that lake is. So my daughter Kaylee has been very into Jenkins Creek Lake for a long time. And on her own has been collecting data about the various bird species that live in that lake. And she has counted eight, how many species of ducks? Gosh, I don't remember. It was, you, it was, I think, like six to eight species of ducks a couple of seasons ago. She's counting on her fingers. That live in that lake, including some like wood ducks that are very hard to see and to find. And she had like the nesting pairs picked out and they all had ducklings. And so that lake is really a little treasure. And I know that there are some that feel like we should return that to a moving kind of riverbed. And I hear it, but man, as a citizen, it's, that's hard for me because those ducks and that lake, they're just lovely. And there's a lot of wildlife living there. Did you figure it out? We're gonna go with six, six different species of ducks. So anyway, let me let Jeff add his thoughts here.
I like the idea of the, like a community garden or a pea patch in that area. And the, the little lake, I guess you guys are calling it. Have we ever done a trash cleanup out of it? Because I had taken, we had taken our dogs up there once and they were swimming in it. And some guy stopped us when we were coming out and said, there's a lot of glass and debris in that lake. So I don't know, community cleanup project maybe and later.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff. I kind of have to punt that to Ethan. Sorry, Ethan.
Yeah, I mean, we certainly do maintenance at the, at the park and we have had volunteer cleanup events there. I'm not so sure that we've done anything specifically with cleaning spring pond. I know they fish things out that they can see from time to time, but yeah, I'm sure there is all sorts of stuff underneath the surface as well. Yep.
And I mean, this, like, I just kind of, I almost feel like I'm beating the same drum here, but once we get this park master planned and built out, I think that will help so much with these types of problems. Because as you, like Christine said, as you develop a park for children and the children bring their parents and you have people moving through the park and the sightlines are good and the community realizes, oh, hey, this is a great place to be. There's more people moving through the park. And so those nefarious elements that want to be left alone to write their graffiti on the sidewalk and throw their glass in the lake, aren't going to want to hang out and do that in front of other people. And so that, you know, what I mentioned about the security part of it, like, once we get that park master planned and developed out, a lot of these things, in theory, ideally, will sort of solve themselves in a way. It's not going to be perfect because it never is, but I think it will cut down a lot on some of these elements and the reputation that that park does have for those types of things. Okay, I feel like I was gonna say something or I missed somebody somewhere. If I missed you, please speak up. Okay, maybe I didn't. All right. Okay. Well, that's Jenkins Creek. And as, it's great to hear a good discussion about this. You know, Parks has a lot of thoughts and feelings about this. We're excited for the future of that park because I think it's going to be fantastic. When I lived in Austria, there were certain parks, they called them Erholunggebiet, relaxation parks, like parks specifically for relaxation, rest, to connect to nature. And that's kind of the vision that we have with Jenkins Creek Park, as well as bringing in the family-friendly element of places for kids to play and that type of thing. So it's gonna be great when it's all done. So just really quickly to kind of wrap up some other things about our park system that's growing. Well, SOCO isn't going to grow yet, but you may or may not know, we've got a legislative appropriation to fund the first phase of design and development for that park down in the south part of Covington. So that too will get a master plan. And we'll figure out with community input how we want to design that, how we want to build that out. Covington Community Park, you may or may not know, we're gonna replace or re-turf the athletic field to help with drainage. That's going to happen next year. Jesse of Maintenance, when we talked to him, was super excited about that. And so that was, grant funds are going to pay for that. And our park system is growing. It's actually very exciting for me as a person who's been here a while and as a council member or a Parks Commission member to say, like, when I first came on, I realized pretty quickly, if we're gonna grow our park system, we need to kind of buy land because the land is going to disappear. And once it becomes an apartment center or a parking lot or a housing development, that land is not coming back. And we have gotten some really neat opportunities to expand. And we have gotten some really neat opportunities to expand our system. So we've got what we are now calling Eco Park. So East Covington Park, that purchase that we did behind Cornerstone Church that just kind of popped out, out of nowhere. And I'm excited for that park in particular because that will provide connectivity between neighborhoods. Right now you can't get on foot from west of Pipe Lake to Pipe Lake and further east. Like you have to go on Kent Kangley. You can't go through the neighborhoods. That park, if we design it with a path that cuts through, will connect those two neighborhoods. Crystal View Park, there's been talk of possibly purchasing a parcel to increase that welcome park. There's been talk about that kind of at the Calhoun Pit area. So our park system is growing and that is super, super exciting to see that we are kind of putting stakes in the ground now on places that we can hopefully develop out sooner rather than later. But I know the money thing is always a challenge. So Ethan, did you want to add anything to those things that I just skipped through really quickly?
I think you said it well, you know, there's opportunities that have been coming by and, and the city's been taking advantage of of doing some land banking and looking to the future. And I think that's great. Yeah.
And so a thanks goes to you guys, council, because you need to approve these purchases. And so we're thankful for your, it means just the fact that you are willing to bank some land, pay for some land, invest now in something that will be developed a little bit later. And so thank you for growing the park system because probably not my kids, but maybe my grandkids will be playing in these places that we have purchased now. So. Okay, um, any final thoughts from any commission members, council members? We've got like five minutes at the very, very most. And so anybody want to add anything? Anywhere? Oh, yes, Robert.
Hey, so I, I'll kind of voice something I think Jeff would agree with as well is everybody has, has gone through COVID and, and we've all kind of evolved the way that we work and what we've done. I know my family added a family member. And, and the ASPCA will, will say that one in five homes also added a dog to their household over the last year, which is just incredible. When you start to think about the numbers, it's about 23 million households nationwide. And in Covington, that would equate to probably about 1,500 more dogs. Hopefully they all got licensed. Can't vouch for it, but mine was. So that's always great. But that's a lot of dogs, right? And one thing that I just wanted to touch on is, you know, there's a lot of opportunity to, to bring our community together with a dog park. Jeff mentioned that he goes out to Maple Valley to utilize one. If you look at our, our planning commissions and the zoning regulations in the area, yards are getting smaller, right? The houses are getting bigger. My house is guilty of it. There's not a, a ton of space or open space in Covington to, to get out and exercise your pet. And when we do, I'm not saying myself, but then the neighbors, it's typically an area that's not appropriate or well, legal, right? It's, you know, you see the dogs running around Kentwood Fields or Matson Fields and our community members are just looking for an outlet to get their dogs out running and exercising. So as we look at returning to back in work and, and people going back in the offices and separation anxiety from pent up dogs is going to be a challenge. The ability to get out and, and, and run your dog in an, in an appropriate place would be great to see. And dog parks are typically relatively inexpensive to, to install. And we have acquired some land to look, to look that together, but also the opportunity to partner with some of our local community members that may be able to do outdoor dog training instead of tucked into Petco or PetSmart indoor where they've had to shut down classes. So a lot of puppy classes are overwhelmed and full. So there's opportunity to do that. If we had a, an assigned space outside to be able to accomplish that, but really it would keep our, our local school playgrounds cleaner. Not having pets running around where they're not supposed to be, but wanted to look at that as an opportunity in the future as, as we, we return to work and I need to find places to run these dogs.
And that I think puts kind of a nice cap on the other thing that pops up every now and then in Parks Commission is this idea of a dog park. It's been a consistent kind of thing that comes and goes, just depending on who's advocating for it, but it's a, something in our community that has been expressed by various people at various times that this is a need. So with that, if there are no other comments, then I think I will wrap it up or turn it over to Jeff so you can officially wrap it up.
Thank you, Laura. I wanted to say thank you to each of you in the Parks and Rec Commission. Really appreciate all the hard work that you've done and all the great ideas that you bring forward to us. Because literally you're planting the seeds of, to help Covington grow. And it's always nice to hear all these great ideas in this study session. I always look forward to Parks and Rec Commission to hear about how we're going to increase the ability for our kids and, and now our pets to be able to play outside. So I thank you all very much. Very good presentations tonight. Thank you. And with that, it is 6:57. So let's take a five minute break and we will come back to a council meeting at 7:02.